Please rise if you'd like to and are able to for the invocation led by Deacon Greg Thompson, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Boy Scouts.
Mayor Battle, council representatives, and all gathered here this evening, thank you for this opportunity to gather for the greater good of our community. Let us pray. Loving God, we ask for your presence and support empowering in us a passion for justice and a genuine sense of community. We thank you for the strong connection between all people in our city, in all of our homes, and neighborhoods, and businesses. We ask for your support of the leadership gathered here tonight. May their integrity and courage guide us forward, creating a vision that leads us towards a future not solely our own. Be with those who struggle this night, the sick, the lonely, and the homeless, and be with those who seek to give them care and protection, especially our civil servants, hospital workers, elderly caregivers, and community shelters. Bring these powers of love and humility, compassion and understanding, wisdom and reason, and peace and freedom into our hearts as we seek to serve one another. Great God, be with us now in the fullness of life, filling us with purpose and hope. This is our prayer, given in your holy name. Amen.
Scouts, if you'd lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon Thompson. Thank you, Boy Scouts. The minutes from the regular meeting held August 14, 2014 have been received, and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Regina Parker to come forward along with her ladies here in, I would call it blue, my wife would call it teal maybe.
Teal.
Teal, ladies in teal. And tonight, we are recognizing, in the city of Huntsville, this is ovarian cancer awareness month. And ovarian cancer, it was amazing reading the proclamation, have 22,000 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer and 14,000 die from this disease. And the Lilia Valleys provide support and awareness about this disease, the deadliness of the gynecology cancers to the women of Huntsville and the Tennessee Valley. And we have several other whereas, but we want to say to you that we join you in your fight, we join you in your awareness, we join you in ovarian cancer awareness week. And to all the ladies in teal, thank you for coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm Regina Parker. I'm the current director of the Lilies of the Valley, and we're for ladies in Huntsville and the Tennessee Valley area, or the support and awareness group for ovarian cancer. And we're real excited this year to have some new things going on. We joined with some groups in Birmingham, Mobile, and Montgomery for a statewide initiative this year called A State of Teal. You can go online and look at it, it's astateofteal.org. And there's a Facebook page, and then we have a Facebook page with the information on it. We're getting buildings in the state of Alabama to light teal this year for ovarian cancer awareness month. We hope that one day all women connect the teal with ovarian cancer just as much as they do the pink with breast cancer. Ovarian cancer does not affect as many women, the numbers are not as big, but the disease is a lot more insidious and hard to catch and a lot deadlier because of that. So, we're proud this year. Huntsville Hospital, Women and Children's Center, Calhoun Community College, and the Huntsville Botanical Gardens will be lit, and downtown Huntsville will light the AL.com building one weekend this month. And next year, we're going to hit up the mayor and some other people in the city and see if we could just get the whole city lit. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much, and my wife would say it's silly, that is teal, that's not blue. So, thank y'all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Also, Ms. Chairman, if I can take something somewhat out of order, Joy McKee, Joy, would you come forward? Joy is head of our landscape department, head of our green team, head of our cemetery, and other things to be later to be named. It has lots of things, but this is Joy's 15-year anniversary with the city. I have a pen for you, Joy.
It's something good, Joy.
This is Joy's 15th year with the city, and it seems like she's been here a lot more than 15 years, and this 15 years, she's probably done 30 or 40 years' worth of work. So, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's all I have, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Council members and for the public, 14B tonight will require unanimous consent. 14B requires unanimous consent. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-485 zoning newly annexed property lying on the south side of Naughty Walls Road and west of Old Big Cove Road to Residence 1B District. This was set July 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting.
The proposed property is approximately 1.2 acres. It's located on the south side of Naughty Walls Road and west of Old Big Cove Road. This is newly annexed land with an existing single-family dwelling. The proposed zoning is Residence 1B, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning district.
Thank you very much. Is anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval. Second by Doc. showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-487 zoning newly annexed property lying on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and south of Miller Lane to Residence 1A District. This was set July 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is approximately 3.04 acres. It's located on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and south of Miller Lane. This is newly annexed land with one single, existing single-family detached dwelling, and the proposed zoning is Residence 1A, which is consistent with the other home south of this area.
Thank you very much. Is anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval. Second by Doc. showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance 14-489 zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Bird Drive to Residence 1B District. This was set July 10, 2014. Ms. Nichols?
This property is approximately 1.91 acres. It's located on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Bird Drive. This is newly annexed property with one existing single-family detached dwelling. The proposed zoning is Residence 1B District, which is consistent with the other home south of this area.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Is anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval. Second by Doc. showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-491 amending the approved specific function and use table for the permitted uses with the Linden Plan Development. This was set July 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This proposed amendment contains major changes within transect five of the Linden Plan Development project. The areas that are highlighted in the red represent are the transect five area, which is mainly your more intensive uses, including your commercial. There were additional uses that the developer wished to add in those particular transects. Also, there was language that was updated regarding restaurants. Restaurants that are within a 500-foot buffer of a residential district are not permitted to have any type of live entertainment after 11:00 p.m. Also, entertainment cannot be audible outside of the establishment, as well as no live entertainment is permitted on any type of private sidewalk or cafe.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Is anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Doc. showers. Ms. Leto, what are the uses that were added?
Hotels were added as a permitted use, as well as acute long-term care. Also, restaurants that permit entertainment, both within the 500-foot buffer of a residential district, as well as restaurants that are not within a 500-foot buffer, as well as there was language added regarding alcoholic beverages. Any alcoholic beverages are, no, excuse me, no alcoholic beverages are permitted to be served, offered, dispensed between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. on any day, regardless of whether it is weekend or weekday. And this language was approved by both John Blue, as well as Hal Fulmer with Brookdale Place.
And Ms. Nichols, sorry, I called you Ms. Leto out of habit.
That's okay.
She's been doing this for years and messed me up. Has this gone through the planning commission?
It has.
And did anybody speak at the planning commission?
No.
Okay. Councilmembers, further discussion?
Mr. President, this is a little bit redundant, but I had some concerns that were expressed by some folks within the district. This use that we're talking about, this is just for the Linden facility only?
Yes.
It does not open up any new zoning classification or anything?
No, it's only within the Linden Plan Development, they spell out all of their uses prior.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for Michelle Jordan doing business as A Metro Taxi Cab Company. This was set August 14, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a new taxi company, A Metro Taxi. They're operating 12 vehicles. The application's in order for your consideration after the hearing.
Thank you. Is anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue?
Mr. President, we should probably point out that the Michelle Jordan here is a different Michelle Jordan than the one who is director of planning for the city of Huntsville.
Thank you. Is anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Doc. showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries.
Thank you.
We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the council. Mr. Rusty Lozell.
My name's Rusty Lozell. I'm with help the homeless veterans. I live in south Huntsville. I know you all miss me. I've been away for a few days. According to the VA, homeless among our veterans is supposed to be eliminated by 2015. I'm not going to hold my breath. Every day, I see homeless veterans who have been homeless for years, and it doesn't look like anything's going to happen anytime soon. Yes, they've done everything they're supposed to do, they've filled out every ridiculous paper, made every appointment, fulfilled every requirement, but still live in tents in the woods for years. A VA insider said that they just now started working on applications from 2011. Millions of dollars a year are pumped into organizations to help our homeless, but the homeless get very little help because of the 80 and 90% overhead cost and misuse of funds. They might get 10 cents on the dollar in help if they're lucky. Our society also has catch-22, which makes it nearly impossible for the homeless person to get a job. You can't get a job if you don't have an address. You can't get a bank account if you don't have an address. You can't get a P.O. box if you don't have an address. You can't get benefits if you don't have an address. In the past, council meetings, certain speakers have suggested that when city jobs are being posted, that special consideration should be given to certain people because of their color. Well, I'm not going to go down that racist road. I am going to ask that certain consideration be given to our veterans, no matter what their color, ethnic origin, or religion. One way to prevent homelessness of our veterans is to hire our veterans. Many of them are highly trained. For one reason or another, they've lost their home. When you lose your home, you do not automatically become a bum, a drunk, a drug addict, you become homeless. Knowing how bad our economy is, it is not hard to see how someone could have lost their home. Right now, the home building is very slow. Businesses have laid off millions and cut hours for a lot of people of all walks of life. Many of us have made it through, but still felt the sting of declining economy. Some of our veterans came home to no jobs. No jobs means no money. No money means you can't pay your bills. When you can't pay your bills, you lose your home, your car, and some have even lost their families. So, it basically boils down to jobs. I know veterans that would take a street sweeping job right now. I know veterans who are IT specialists who are out of work. I know of other veterans who are almost blind that are living in the woods.
Sir, your time's up. Do you need another minute?
One minute, please.
Councilmember, is that okay? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So, I will ask you this question. When city jobs are posted, are they posted where homeless veterans can see them being offered, and would they be considered knowing that they are homeless? And does the city require an address as a prerequisite for getting a job?
Thank you, sir. Is Mr. Thomas here? Mr. Thomas, did you hear the comments from our citizen?
I heard some of them, yes, sir.
So, the question he was asking about where we post jobs, how we advertise jobs, and do you need an address to get a job with the city? Could you answer those, please?
Yes, sir. One way we post jobs throughout the city is on our website. As well as posting them on our website, we put them online through governmentjobs.com. But we also send blue sheets, our announcement, out to various agencies throughout the community. Still-serving veterans is one of them that we send them to, and other agencies. And we send them to individuals. Anyone that would like to be made aware of our announcements, we will send them the job announcement. For us, address, an application has to be completed, so we do need address information, telephone number, so we can contact that individual if they're selected for an interview.
Okay. Could you get with Mr. Lozell and just see if there's any way we can help with this issue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
Mr. Thomas, could I ask a question? I guess let me take it a step further.
Yes, sir.
I think the federal government does have some guidelines to use, but what would be involved in the city of Huntsville having a policy where hiring preference would be given to veterans? I think there's some sort of a point process that the federal government goes through. I think they give like so many points, you know, as a head start for veteran applicants. I know that we have a little process we use, like for bids, I think there's like a 3% preference that we give for local vendors over out-of-town vendors. Could we do something possibly along the line of what the gentleman's talking about, where there could be a preference given for hiring veterans?
One thing is, to clarify, the federal government does not use that process in all agencies. There are certain requirements that they have to do that. The city of Huntsville is very good in making sure that we consider all applicants for our position, and we've hired veterans, and we have a good many, and throughout all our different departments. There's not a requirement by state, and Peter could probably address that better than I can. There's not a state requirement, and the city is following all the state guidelines and federal guidelines. But for us, point preferences is restricted within the federal government to certain agencies, and there are certain requirements.
Well, you know, of course, we probably could have a work session or get into more, you know, memos and discussion about it. It just seems like since we do so much, we have such a close relationship with the military, and, you know, this is, you know, kind of important part of the community, and we, I think we do a good job of trying to show that relationship and that appreciation throughout the year, not just on a few holidays. But I'm just kind of wondering if this might be a step that we could look into trying to take to see if there would be a little extra preference that we could give for that. But again, that's a policy thing. I guess we'd have to have some discussion about it, but I'd be very open and interested in looking into it.
Mr. Kling and members of the council, probably the best thing we can do is to make sure that whatever job opportunities we do have here at the city are widely published, and we make every effort to make them available to veterans organizations and the homeless and others. We would not be able to establish preferences for any classification of individual, but we can maximize our efforts to make the information available to those organizations and individuals.
Could anything be done about the homeless address situation? Or where it could be, a person could be homeless, but he could fill out an application in care of a certain agency, Veterans Helping Veterans, or something like that, where he could be reached as a contact? I mean, I'm just, you know, I don't have the answers. I guess I'm just trying to find it. Is there a way we could work out something like that? Because I think the gentleman raised some issues, and we've heard it before, and again, you know, we talked about the relationship of this community with the military, and it just seems like if there's a way we could work it out and help those at the very bottom that do need the help, that would be a good thing.
Yes, sir. We understand. I'd be happy to meet with the individual that brought up the concern and see how we can work with him and go from there.
I guess the real issue is, it's not a requirement to have a resident to get a job. It's, you're asking for a resident so that you can get to them if they, so the bottom line is, there's no really reason, I mean, that's why I'm glad you are going to talk to Ms. Lozell, because there's no reason why, I mean, you couldn't have still-serving veterans or first stop or whatever, the places that they go to take, whatever they do, and if they actually, and, you know, so I just want to make sure, am I right, Peter? It's not a requirement to have a job, that you have to have an address. These guys are just looking to be able to get the paperwork, find out about a job, and if they qualify, they qualify, and then they'll get out of that, that maybe they get out of that place. I just, I don't want to get caught up in this address thing. The address is just so you guys can get a hold of them, so that, and that's workable, I think, but that's just me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brian Davis?
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Brian Davis. I'm the executive director of the Huntsville Madison County Mental Health Board, and I'm here to say thank you for your continued support from the city council. We are a public nonprofit that serves children, adolescents, and adults with mental health and substance abuse needs. Almost 9,000 people this year we will serve. We do have the benefit of an appropriation from the city of Huntsville, and the city council appoints half of our board of directors. So, we are very much your community mental health center. I'm here to share with you that our board of directors, in looking at our strategy for growth and how we can better serve this community, has decided to change our Doing Business as name. And most people know us as the Mental Health Center, and we will still be the Mental Health Center and continue to serve the folks in our community most at risk, often at no charge or on a sliding fee scale. But you all are aware that 2/3 of the people that need mental health treatment do not get the help that they need. And the biggest reason still in 2014 is stigma. And we have that stigma coming to the Mental Health Center, and it just keeps a lot of people from coming to us that we think we could help if we can help them get past that. We also want a Doing Business as name that is more inclusive, and that lets people know, regardless of your station in life, that's a place that can help me. And so, effective October 1st, we will still be the Huntsville Madison County Mental Health Board with our legal name, but our Doing Business as name is going to change to Wellstone Behavioral Health. And let me tell you a little bit about what that, where that comes from. The term behavioral health is simply just a more modern term that's used to signify any diagnosable disorders that affect the way we behave, whether it's mental illness, substance use disorders, or a lot of other things that we treat. The term Wellstone is a loose reference to the community on the top of Monticeno years ago, where people traveled from all over the country for rest, relaxation, and renewal, and Monticeno became known as the mountain of health. And so, we liked that idea of being about wellness and health and not about illness. So, that's where the well comes from. And then the stone is a reference to that mountain, that strength, and we believe that we can reach more people this way, continue to support the government's work, and those that need assistance financially, but also hopefully reach a broader cut of our communities.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, your time out. Would you like another minute?
I'm good. I'll entertain questions or comments. There will be press releases coming in the next few weeks about this, talking to media, so you'll hear more about it, but I wanted y'all to hear it from me first in this forum.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Well, not a question, Mr. President, but I do have a comment. And having had a strong nexus with your organization, Brian, for some nearly 10 years before I was elected to the council, I cannot begin to tell you how much, and I hope I speak for all of us, we appreciate the work that you're doing in our community, but not for your organization. The police department's job would be a nightmare, and this city probably would not be as safe as it is. There are always areas for improvement, but you all are doing an excellent job, and I just wanted to say that to you publicly. And I know that your organization will be coming up before us in another month or two, Mayor, for that well-needed funding. So, you certainly have my support on that as well. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
I appreciate that, and I hope you all see this change in our brand or Doing Business as name as an opportunity to diversify who we're serving, hopefully our funding streams, so that we can use your dollars, taxpayer dollars, well, and stretch them as far as we can.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you for your continued support.
My name is Lyle Voiles. I live at 7704 Teal Drive, Huntsville. Mr. President, council members, at the working session of the city council on 19 June, many members of the Huntsville Council Neighborhood Associations addressed the need for a rental property inspection ordinance that would require owners of rental property to acquire an annual business license and register all rental properties under their ownership with the city, and require an inspection of the exterior and interior prior to occupancy by a new tenant for compliance with building codes and to obtain a certificate of occupancy. It's truly encouraging to know that city leadership has favorably responded to those expressed concerns, and that the city departments are actively studying ideas, recommendations, and material that may lead to a rental property inspection ordinance for the city. The material in front of you will address some of your expressed questions and concerns, though, that you raised on the 19th of June. The index shown on page one is a notional but realistic financial breakdown of costs and expenditures in which the city would clear over $400,000 the first year of the program. Inspection ordinances from cities in such U.S. locations as Dallas, Texas, and Savannah, Georgia are included in that package. However, it's the cities of both Anniston and Gadsden that bear direct attention due to the fact that Dillon's rule should not be an obstacle for consideration of a similar ordinance for Huntsville, since those two Alabama cities already have them established. Certificate of occupancy, inspection fees, enforcement and penalties, and business licensing is contained within those ordinances, which can be just as effective in Huntsville as they are in Anniston and Gadsden. On page 19 are questions and answers related to the effectiveness of just one of those rental property inspection programs, in which the comments are such things as, "That property values actually increased in the immediate area of the rental properties." Landlords are more picky in choosing their tenants, and neighborhoods are more peaceful. The program's had a favorable impact on both the police and fire departments, and the new ordinance certainly turned things around. Well, with comments and results like that, why wouldn't we want the same for Huntsville? Of additional interest is the fact that the mayor of Gadsden is a realtor, appraiser, broker. If the program is working for his city, then how do those opposed to this ordinance justify it not working for Huntsville? Please take the time to also read the minimum urban rehabilitation standards on page 29, and the mandatory crime reduction program for designated apartment complexes on page 35. Both of these have been effective in reducing crime. Gentlemen, please, I encourage you to take the time to read that package, because you're going to have naysayers calling calling you about it. Implementing a rental property inspection ordinance will be a significant step forward in maintaining and reclaiming our older Huntsville communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for laying the public input. A big thanks to Mayor Tommy Battle for taking his time out to wish my mother-in-law on Saturday, 100th birthday.
Wow.
She really said, "Thank you very, very much." I want to thank Joy McGee for her 15 years of great service. I think she's done a great job. She also let me know that the forest I complained about over here were the railroad tracks. She's got it all under control. That makes me happy. I want to thank 48 and 19 for a great press conference Monday afternoon at 6:30. If nobody didn't see any of that, they need to go back and see it. It was a true story, and it was just awesome. I must say, the election is over. I'm still at the microphone, but I will not be going away. I've never been through an election. I've lost 14 times. I'm a good loser. Trust me, I'll be back. But this was the craziest election I've ever been in. Signs were stolen. Churches I've got booted out of. Also, on a talk radio, talk show, between councilman and I, I was asked the question, "Where did you sleep last night?" Now, that's getting pretty bad. On a talk radio. Dale Jackson, as a matter of fact, he's a pretty good person. He didn't get involved. But also, there was a video laying there that said, "Five o'clock in the morning, somebody was at my house, the other house, but where I slept at," I think he was referring to. I don't know that. This redistricting plan, where I moved in District 4 because of the redistricting plan. I had moved to 1,008 Bob Wallace, and I was living there. And somebody was stalking me and running me up and down the roads trying to keep up with me. But there was a video and a camera saying, "At 5:00 in the morning, Jackie Reed was at this house." I call that stalking. But anyway, I had went through a whole lot through this election. And, you know, that's not my kind of government. God wouldn't be happy with people like that carrying on, and I'm not happy with it. But I'm here. Kling's not free of Jackie Reed. He's still got static. All of you got static, because I'm going to be here. I don't care what the people say. If you're concerned about me being too old, I'll be back. Two or three years, I'll be here. God will make my decisions for them too old. And when I go away, I turn this election over to him. Obviously, he don't want me up there yet. But someday, if I live long enough, thank all of you and I love you. And if you will do me a favor, please, and hold three issues tonight, I am concerned, 15 W, B, C, and D. And I want to thank, please let me say this, Mayor Battle, Mark Russell, Councilman Oshesky, for not throwing me out of my district. I'll take that to my grave. You don't know how much I appreciate
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
that you didn't throw me out. Did I get another minute?
No, would you like another minute?
No, I want to tell you how much I love you and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I would like to respond to some of these issues that were raised. On my way to the Dale Jackson Show, I just happened to mosey down Jack Coleman Drive with the camera, and there was a car there. There were two cars there, and not too many cars that had "Reed for Mayor" and "Battle for Mayor" bumper stickers on them in the middle of a city council race in a house that had no lights turned on. I don't want, the election's over. I want to just talk in terms of a city issue, since the issue's been raised about redistricting. I would refer the public, or anyone that wants to, to look at the City Council hearing minutes. July 14, 2011 was one of the hearings where, and this is from the minutes, referring to comments of Ms. Reed. Quote, she asked that they gerrymander her or whatever they had to do to get her into Kling's district. Also, on the redistricting hearing minutes from Thursday, October, excuse me, August the 4th, 2011, the staff was asked to evaluate the district plans that we had, the City of Huntsville plan and the plan that Ms. Reed had worked with the staff and had drawn up. Connie Graham, who does not report to me, the City Council, or anybody, she reports as an employee independent to the mayor, pointed out that Ms. Reed's plan was that her neighborhood had become divided. And Ms. Graham stated that their original goal had been not to do this, and that was the reason that they had used Jordan Lane as their boundary line. So anybody can look at the minutes, and I'm just giving you that that came, and perhaps that'll clear up some of the discussion about the issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have one board appointment to be voted on. We have a resolution to appoint Nathaniel Hudson to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a term to expire April 14, 2015. Motion by Dr. Showers. I'm not sure who seconded that. Mr. Culver seconded discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. We have several board nominations. We have a nomination of Rose Allen for reappointment to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2017, made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination of Kim Ogil for appointment to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2016, made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination of Rosa Toussaint for appointment to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a term to expire April 12, 2017. Nomination of Wayne Bonner for reappointment to the Von Braun Center Board of Control for a term to expire August 27, 2018. We have a nomination of Ed Anderson for reappointment to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a term to expire April 28, 2017, made by Dr. Showers. Are there other nominations?
Yeah, so I would like to submit Robert Flowers.
Dr. Showers, if you could, please, make sure your microphone's on. It's Robert Showers?
Not Flowers.
Flowers?
The Housing Board of Appeals.
Robert Flowers, Housing Board of Appeals. Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mark Harbarger for reappointment Downtown Redevelopment Authority.
Okay. Are there other nominations? Moving on, we're now at 10. Approval expenditures, 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, move for payment of vouchers in the amount of $11,812,366.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Mr. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
No, Mr. President, thank you.
Mayor Battle?
Mr. President, thank you for having us here. And to all those who were elected on Tuesday night, Beth Wilder, welcome again. Congratulations and welcome to the team. To those still in elections, six more weeks. And I'm sorry you're in there for six more weeks. I've been in runoffs before. They're no fun. To those who did not come out on the winning side, I've been on that side, too. And I will tell you that you learn a lot from that side just as much as you learn off of the winning side. And obviously, there's another plan for you, and you'll have a great time. But to thank each of those people who put their name on the line and put their name out to run for office in the City of Huntsville and put themselves out for leadership. It's not an easy thing to do. So to each of those, thank you for doing that. Last Saturday was the mayor's bike ride. Three department heads were there to ride bikes with the mayor. There were some 31 who were not there, who are all on my list. And there were five council members who were not there, who are all on the list, too. At that time, I took the ALS Challenge, where buckets of cold water and ice were poured over my head. So I challenged all who were not there, who were department heads or councilmen, to the ALS Challenge. And you can send money to ALS if you want to get out of having the cold buckets of water poured over your head. Also, this is football season. Tonight, Mountain Brook is playing Huntsville on the statewide network. It is, it's, the season has come, and this is a great first game to get started. I think Mr. Russell's going to try to head over there right after a council meeting, if I understand right.
It's up to y'all.
If he runs the council member meeting right. And also, we signed paperwork today for our bond issue that we voted on last week, and I think it'll be voted on a little bit later. We signed all the paperwork, as I understand it, from Mr. Taylor. We had a total of about $7 million worth of savings there by being able to refinance bonds and save the city some money and be able to have the money and use our taxpayers' dollars wisely. To all, I say Happy Labor Day, and that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor kind of took a part of my verbiage tonight, but I, too, want to congratulate all of you who participated in this electorate process. And congratulations is in order to Mr. Russell, President of the Council, whom we congratulated at the last council meeting, and more recently to Councilman Kling on his victory. And we wish everyone else the best who's still running. And this is, this is how it works. So I'm happy with that. And I'm happy with Ms. Reed, who also ran a very well campaign. So enough about all of that. And I'm not going to comment on the two of you who are in a runoff for one of these seats here. I'm just going to keep my mouth shut and wish both of you the very best. I will be visiting with some of the family reunions over the weekend, making some visitations to some of the, I guess, is it Pee-wee football, Dr. Showers, or?
Yes, Little League.
Little League. Little League football. And if you've never watched Little League football, that is so interesting. They do some of the darndest things, for lack of a better description. So I'm going to take in a lot of that. And I wish everyone a very happy, safe, and uneventful Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, I guess I just want to start my comments by recognizing the passing of Danny Bertram, who is the past commander of the American Legion Post 237. I was out walking the Mayfair neighborhood last Friday and came across his house at Benita Circle. And he was there, saw me coming to the door, and we had a great visit. And it was kind of talking old times, and I was enjoying the air conditioning inside his house for about 15 minutes. And I was very saddened to learn Monday morning that he had had a massive heart attack and passed away last Sunday. He will be missed and was a great, a great friend and a great person in this community. As y'all have mentioned, of course, the election is over, and I certainly, it was quite a long trek to go through. I think I've lost about 18 pounds. I went from like 204 to 186, and still kind of drained from it, sun-whipped, I guess is what we call it. And if I'd been anywhere near that bucket of ice water Saturday afternoon, I would have been more than happy to have been a proxy for anyone that was about to get dumped on that. A lot of great people were kind to help me during the campaign. Mrs. Mary Alice Lane, who is the mother of my former campaign manager, who served as honorary campaign manager, Jimmy Lane, who had passed away. I had posse members, firefighters, teachers, realtors, home builders, little old ladies in tennis shoes, as I affectionately call them, business leaders, leaders of the African-American community participate and help me along the way. Good friend Buddy McAvoy. My patient wife Tangi for putting up with everything that's involved in a campaign. But I guess the analogy I would use, and others, all y'all up here have probably been through it. It's similar to running a marathon race. You just keep running, but then there are people on the sidelines that are cheering you along, encouraging you to keep going, offering you bottled water, Cokes, Gatorade, and everything. And it's, it is a process that makes you proud to be part of the City of Huntsville. We've got some great things that I think are going to be taking place in the future. And looking forward to working with folks up here. I think we've got some great neighborhood activities. Road resurfacing taking place. Projects such as the Stone Middle School Project in the central area is great. Looking forward to continuing my monthly town meetings to learn ideas, following up on things. And I think we heard a good idea out here tonight from the gentleman concerning veterans, that I hope maybe we can provide some assistance and work out some of the, some of the kinks on. I think we've got some new economic development projects down the line, improved recreational facilities. We're going to be talking about the John Hunt Master Plan and other things. And I'm proud to be part of the team that, you know, is doing some of the things that we're doing tonight, such as the refinancing that Mayor Battle had mentioned. We have a AAA bond rating, and because of good things that have taken place with our staff and mayor here in the city, we're going to see a cost savings of about $7 million that we'll be able to put to good use for the benefit of the taxpayers. So I just want to thank everybody for kind of going through the process and their encouragement and their support. And, Mr. President, I'm looking forward to a great, possibly the best four years ever for Huntsville City Government in the future.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kling, and congratulations. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to just say how proud and delighted that I am for the district that I represent, District 1. This past Monday, we had the open house at the North Precinct. It was a great turnout of citizens from all over the northern district that attended the open house. And I'm delighted to say that that is, the citizens who reside in that district, that's your precinct. It's laid out beautiful, conference rooms, meeting rooms. All you need to do is go down and call and register and submit when you want to meet. I want to thank our police chief. Is he here tonight?
Do you wish for him to speak?
Yes.
Chief?
Not necessarily to speak. I just want to acknowledge him. Chief, we say congratulations. That was a long time coming. But we are delighted and proud that we finally are in that facility. And we want to thank you and all of the people that work under you, the contractors, Team Huntsville, that contributed to making that day possible. And of course, a man is not here tonight. Rex Reynolds, who played a tremendous part in where that particular precinct is located. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
We had the, a reorganization. I want to thank Kenny Anderson. Is he here tonight? I want to thank Kenny, who came out and spoke to our Lingkoya Civic Association this past week. And of course, that civic association will be meeting again on September 8. And yes, Kenny Anderson will be back to speak again on the pointers that we need for him to address that he does so well. I have a town meeting scheduled for September 2. I want to announce tonight to the public that that meeting has been postponed. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, and I will announce another date for that meeting. Mr. Hasfield, are you here? Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Hasfield and Joy McKee. I don't mean to every council meeting night to bring up the same two names, but those two persons do such a tremendous job for the city of Huntsville, the people who work under them. I'm just, just delighted that we have the kind of people that we have in those departments. Mr. Hasfield, I had a worker who was on one of the streets in my district and was picking up trash. And there were several sections of trash. And he left some of the trash in the street. Now, the dipper picked up all it could, but this driver got out and hand put the debris in the dipper. And y'all know how hot it was last week. And Mr. Hasfield, I just want you to know you've got some fine men and women in Public Works Division. Same thing to you, Joy. And I'm talking about the cutters, the men who trim and hedge and weed eat and drive the tractors and keep the easements cut and keep the back fence rows cut. I'm just delighted that we have those kind of men working for us in our city. I would like someone who's here tonight, standing on the wall, a street at North Crestview and Julia. There is a, and I'm, guess I'm addressing our police chief. I'm getting a lot of calls from that address. They are calling our units. And it appears to them, and I've had several, to call me about the stop sign there at that particular part of our city. And what's happening, our units are being parked at the stop signs. Now, anybody in their right mind are not gonna run a stop sign with the police unit being parked there. What they're having problem with, Chief, is speeders on that street. It does not appear that we can get any relief from those driving, and that's a hilly area. And it appears that we're not getting them slowed up. I don't know whether we need to put in traffic calming or to put units in other places in that neighborhood. But we do come out. They tell me that the units come out and they park near the stop sign. And of course, once they leave, then these other ones who cut through and pass through, they speed down the hill over there. And they're just concerned about the safety of children and the people who reside in that neighborhood. But that's at North Crestview and Julia. That's where that is, if you want to make a note of that.
I did. We, we have some other options that we can use. Because obviously, like you say, when we're there, they see us and nothing happens.
Okay.
We have some other options we can use.
Okay. Mr. President, I, all of us received email this week on the big picture, on our economic development, the group meetings, the citizens academies, focus groups, presentations, image Huntsville. Is it, is Mr. Masson here tonight? Yeah. Ask him if he would come down. Thank you very much, Dennis. What I would like to do is, though the council members receive this, what we're reading through email and all of the proposed meetings that's being scheduled, the one at Lee High School, the others that are being scheduled later on in the month. We got one scheduled at Alabama 8:00 AM University. Could you address, I'm afraid a lot of our citizens don't really know that that's out there.
Sure.
What can we do to give more citizens an opportunity to know that the concerns that they have can be addressed at these different focus meetings? Could you address that?
Absolutely. We look for a lot of different media to push this out. We use our email blast, obviously, to get kind of the initial issue going. But then usually, as we approach the events, get within a couple of weeks, we reach out to media outlets, try to get on the radio, try to get on television, try to get in onale.com as well, and get as much word out as we possibly can. And we also begin to add a little more detail. We know that sometimes if we dump a lot of this information out too early, by the time the event actually rolls around, folks have kind of forgotten about it. So probably in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna see a blitz on the two Citizen Academy sessions in September, and then follow that up with the one in October as well. But we also, we encourage anyone who receives our email, obviously, to send it on. And we also go out and we talk to a lot of civic groups. We've been doing this all over the city. If anyone wants us to come out and talk to their group, we were at the North Alabama African-American Chamber of Commerce a couple of weeks ago. We have been to Hudson Alpha. We're at the Chamber of Commerce for Huntsville, Madison County today. We were at Chaffey Neighborhood, actually, the other night. So we will go out and talk to anyone and really give them a little more detail on what we're doing. But also, we use them as listening sessions as well. So we try and hit as many different media as we possibly can.
Do we let the public know that whether or not the meetings are in their area or district, that they are invited?
Absolutely. We try and be pretty clear, especially when we disseminate the information, that these are public meetings. There's a few that are generally kind of targeted for specific organizations. But when we have public meetings, we try to blanket as much as we can, get the word out every different way we can. We obviously work with Kelly Scrimshaw a lot and Communications to hit as many people as possible. Because those meetings really are, they work best when we get as many people out to them as we can.
Final point. When I went in today myself, in the Instagram photo section of your email, and each time I inputted one of the photos, it was blocked and said that it was not functioning at that particular time.
Okay. Okay. We'll take a look at that. That may just be a little technical glitch on our part. We'll take a look and see if we can fix that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. President, my final point tonight is for a citizen that resides in our district. LaVerda Batz Brooks was funeralized today. I would just ask that those of us that are here tonight will remember the Batz Brook family in your prayers. LaVerda Batz Brooks was finally, funeralized today at the First Missionary Baptist Church. Remember that family in your prayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Oshewski?
First of all, thanks for all that ran. And we're trying to get into, do some public works. And that's, that's, that's all you can say. And that's all you can do is just try to get after it and help out the best you can. Jim McGuffey, he doesn't need to come down here. But Mayor, I gotta tell you, yes, this Tuesday night was the longest planning commission meeting I've been to. And for, you know, having Marie and all them around for all those years and all the above, Jim handles himself wonderfully. He does a great job. So does his staff. I'm not gonna leave the staff out. But those meetings still move along and are, and great answers and a lot of great questions. And he does a great job. I told you this whole story on him today. I think it's worth you poking at him because he got, he got, he had some fun there that night. Lyle, as always, appreciate you coming. More, I wish there was more of you out there that, that report and tell us what's going on. And appreciate you as always. Chip Cherry, I see you out there. Appreciate the Chamber of Commerce and everything that you do. And I was with you at NAID this, this week. Economic development is critical. Tennessee Valley is critical. And I appreciate everything that you chamber and you all do. It's just a powerful group of folks you got. And last but not least, you know, we heard Rex's name earlier today. And, but you know, he, he and his better half had a couple of sons. And one of them works for us, as you all know. Actually, both of them work for us. But here I am, sitting in Bristol, Tennessee, at NASCAR on Saturday. And my phone rings and it's Joy McKee. And she's calling me, thinking that Huntsville Utilities versus sewage issue in a yard in some house somewhere. And I'm, I didn't tell her where I was. I just said, okay. And Rex is sitting across from me. And I said, Joy, I, you know, I think I can help you. And Rex goes, well, my son's, he's at home and I'll, you know, I'll call him and we'll get him over there to take care of it. I mean, this is serious business. I'm, we're smiling about it. But here we are in Bristol, Tennessee. There's Rex. There's me. Joy called. Don't know where we are. And Rex's son goes out there and takes care of business and takes care of sewage issue and all the above. So it's pretty, pretty neat. And that young man is well-respected as well. And I appreciate him jumping on it on a Saturday when he wasn't even on duty. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Showers?
I failed to acknowledge Mark Russell, who was re-elected without opposition. Congratulations. To Bill Kline, congratulations. I look forward to working with you for another term.
Another four years?
Another four years. And I must admit, Mark and John and Will, I went to the reception after the election. I was invited. And of course, you're talking about the food, which was just indicative of Bill Kline. I was certainly received very well. I want to say to candidates that are here today, visiting with us, in 1988, I was in a runoff. I had six candidates in my race. And it came down to two of us. And we had six weeks to catch up, convince other folk to do whatever. And of course, when it does settle, by the people's choice in District One, in my happy delight, I was the winner. So for those of you who are in runoffs, let me just encourage you to hang in there, give it all you got, and the people will speak. As some of the other speakers have said, I won't say more than that. Mr. Henderson, Ms. Robinson are both here tonight. And I wish both of you well. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. September 2nd, at 12 o'clock, we'll have a meeting here in the city council chambers to canvass the votes. I'll need at least three council members here, two including myself. So please put that in your schedule and let me know of your availability. As Mayor had mentioned, Huntsville High and Mountain Brook are kicking off right about now. And we think it will be a good game. If you're watching us, we encourage you to instead go to Milton Frank and buy a ticket and go support Huntsville High, or at least turn it over to Raycom and watch the game there and support them there. Mayor had mentioned that I missed the bicycle race. I had to officiate some football games that day. And I sent my daughter Bailey with instructions to make sure that she beat him. And I hope she did. She did? Okay, good.
She stays in the will?
So Council, Dr. Showers?
Ms. Robinson, Dr. Robinson, does Grissom play tonight? When are they at A&amp;M?
It's Friday night, I believe.
Is it Friday night? Not tonight?
It might be either tonight or Friday. It's this week.
I was gonna rush to that game, but I'm not sure it's tonight. Is it Friday night?
We'll find out. Somebody can look it up on their computer. We have no unfinished business items for action. We do have new business items for introduction. 14A is introduction of ordinance concerning annexation of land on the west side of Mooresville Road and on the north side of Huntsville Browns Ferry Road. B, we've been asked to vote on tonight. It is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding warrants, Series 2014A, in the amount of $54,110,000. General obligation lease refunding and capital improvement warrants, Series 2014B, in the amount of $19,345,000. And general obligation school refunding and capital improvement warrants, Series 2014C, in the amount of $27,45,000. Do we have unanimous consent to vote on it? The chair moves for unanimous consent?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Culver?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have unanimous consent. Is there a motion? Mr. Kling moves. Dr. Showers, second. Ms. Taylor, could you explain this, please?
Yes. Council members, this is the item that the mayor referred to earlier and that you also approved in action on at the last meeting. This is our refinancing warrants that we're issuing. The total amount that the president just read was $100,500,000. We're using all of those proceeds to refinance older debt that was issued at higher interest rates than the new debt is being issued. It will result in savings of about $7 million to both the city and the city school system. We're required to allocate their portion to them. And so this will reduce the debt service for the city over the next several years, ten to fifteen years, when we will realize those seven million in savings. We did approve the agreement with the underwriters at the last meeting, which happened to be the day that we actually priced the warrants in the marketplace. This is the actual issuance of the warrants and obligating the city for this amount of money.
Thank you. Further discussion?
This is probably a little redundant, Mr. Taylor, but this action is something that the bond rating agencies would look favorable toward, wouldn't they?
Yes, Councilman. We, of course, we had to have this rated to do this. And we were rated AAA by both agencies, both of them being aware of our past experience and what we were intending to do for the city with this.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're at 15, which is new business items for consideration or action. Please notify the chair of any items you'd like to hold. We'll hold. Go ahead, Dr. Showers.
I would like to hold AA, BB, CC, and DD.
Okay. That's 15 AA, BB, CC, and DD. Are there any other items you'd like to hold? Hearing non. 15A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with Alabama Emergency Management Agency for EMPG grant fiscal year 2014. B is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with Alabama Emergency Management Agency for supplemental EMPG funding for fiscal year 2013. C is a request for authorization to advertise and fill vacant position of public services worker in the parking division. D is a resolution authorizing mayor to a cost reimbursement agreement with the Northeast Alabama Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $12,000 for traffic enforcement duties. E is an ordinance declaring certain police department vehicles to be deemed as surplus property and sold at auction. F is a resolution authorizing mayor into professional services contract with Standard and Associates, Inc. G is a resolution authorizing special employment agreement with Robin D. Cox. H is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the claims of James Haley and the city versus the city of Huntsville and Tyler Dwayne neighbors. I is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Regent's Bank letter credit number 55106025 for Cedar Park at Belgro Phase II subdivision. J is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreements with the low bidders meeting specifications outlined in the tax summary of bids for acceptance. K is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. L is an ordinance to amend budget orders number 13630 by changing authorized personnel strength in the various departments and funds. M is an ordinance to amend budget orders number 13630 by changing appropriate funding for various departments and funds. N is an ordinance authorizing disposal of the surplus equipment identified as the imagistics copier, model ZC55, and serial number 4080159, located at 101 Church Street, Suite 201, per agreement with Mars LLC. O is a resolution authorizing mayor in a lease agreement with Roger Martin Farms for the lease of farmland on the southwest corner of Capshaw Road and Wall Trina Highway. P is a resolution authorizing mayor in a lease agreement with Roger Martin Farms for the lease of farmland in Cummings Research Park. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor in a renewal land lease agreement with Vanover Farms for the lease of farmland located on the east side of Old Red Row Bed Road at Magnolia Springs subdivision. R is a resolution authorizing the city council to amend the contract with SAC Construction LLC for sanitary sewer rehabilitation cured in place pipe installation, 2013, project number 6513SP32, by change order number one. S is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with Garver LLC for engineering construction administration services for 2014 water pollution control sanitary sewer rehabilitation, project number 6514SP50. T is a resolution authorizing award for the Boys and Girls Club of North Alabama with CDVG's public service funds in order to serve between 600 to 800 youth. U is a resolution to award the Village of Promise with CDVG public services fund in order to serve elementary to college age students. V is a resolution award Harris Home for Children with CDVG Community Development Block Grant, public service funds for labor supplies and materials to renovate living spaces for the basic crisis program. W is a resolution award Harris Home for Children, Inc. with UDAG funds for labor supplies and materials to renovate living spaces for the basic crisis program. X is a resolution award the National Children Advocacy Center with UDAG funds for child abuse intervention services. Y is a resolution award New Features, Inc. with UDAG funds for tutoring and mentoring activities for homeless children between the age of 13 and 17. Z is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement with Community Action Partnership of Huntsville, Madison, and Lime Sun Counties, Inc. for services to homeless population. The chair moves for consolidation approval of 15A through 15Z.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. All those in favor, consolidation approval. Signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. 15 AA is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of North Alabama. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Binion, could you explain this, please?
This is a modification which we moved fund, we, we had appropriated funds last year for the Boys and Girls Club, $175,000. $57,000 was left to still be spent on that contract. The timeframe that they had to spend the CDVG funds was about to expire. So we shifted it over, we modified it to pull the money out of UDAG so they would still be able to spend those same funds.
Thank you, sir. Questions or further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. BB is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and Gallatin Partners LLC for found row airspace and rights. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Who made the second? Dr. Showers, second. Council members, this is an agreement. Councilmembers, this is an agreement to, for a company to lease the air rights to connect a bridge from one building to other over found row on the other side of Williams. It's, the law firm Maynard Cooper will be the one using the building. The air rights were appraised, and a lease agreement's been worked out. And I think it's gone through Board of Zoning and the Planning Commission in the last couple of months. And I've seen it there, and none of my constituents are complaining about it. Everybody seems to be in favor of it. Is there further discussion?
Dollar amount.
I believe it appraised at roughly $2,400. I could be a little bit off on that. And the lease agreement is for $200 a year.
Can you describe physically again where the, where the, it would go, the walkway?
If you know where the current Maynard Cooper building is on Gallatin, behind that is Fountain Row Circle. And they will build a building on Found Row and connect their existing building to the new building.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. CC is ordinance clearing 2.257 acre tract of property located along Meridian Street as surplus and no longer needed for a municipal or public purpose.
Motion approved.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Oshewski. Mr. Jefferson?
Members of the council, CC and DD are related. This involves a, roughly a quarter acre tract of land that is, was originally acquired from the Housing Authority back in the early 1980s. It's an uneconomic remnant for the city of Huntsville. We have no need for the property. The adjacent property owner has asked to purchase it. It was appraised for $240,000. And the item C is the ordinance to declare it surplus. Item DD is the purchase and sale agreement authorizing its sale to the adjoining property
Ms. Jefferson, why is it not needed anymore if it's worth $240,000?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Why is the property not needed anymore if it's worth $240,000?
Well, we, it was, it was granted, conveyed to us back in the early 80s by the Housing Authority, is probably as part of a much larger tract of land. It sits in isolation, it's on Meridian Street. We've widened Meridian Street since that time. It's, there are no city facilities adjacent to it. There are no city facilities, there are no structures on it. It's only a quarter acre tract of land, and probably has no use but to anyone other than the adjacent property owner. Mr. Davis can answer any more questions related to that?
And Councilman Russell, when we acquired the tract, it was a much larger tract. We've made improvements to the channel widening, the creek there near Bud Kramer Park and along Meridian Street, and the widening of Meridian Street. So once we got done with all those improvements, it left about a quarter acre remnant that's no longer needed. So, you know, we have an adjacent property owner that's wanting to develop. The property's not large enough by itself as a whole to develop on. So we had it appraised and selling it for appraised value so we can go back on the tax rolls.
So we'll actually, then why are we declaring surplus if we're selling it for appraised value?
We're declaring it surplus because it doesn't have a public need anymore. We've, we're finished all the improvements that we originally bought the larger tract that it was part of. So this is the remnant that was left after all the city improvements.
And under state law, it's a requirement, if we are going to sell property, that we first declare that it's surplus to our needs before we can then authorize a sale agreement.
And I'm not real familiar, I know where Meridian Street is and obviously know the area. Why won't we use it like as a pocket park or something like that?
We already have a pocket park that's west of there, and we're making the channel improvements. Most of the park property is deeper inside of the park in the creek channel. This is, front's right up along Meridian Street, and it's just not a good use for that.
Okay. Further discussion, Mr. Kling?
Would there be any benefit in doing a bid process, RFP, instead of just, you know, selling it to this one person company as a, at the appraised value?
You know, we, we were not actively trying to sell it. We were approached by the joining, the only person that would really benefit is the joining owner. Because under our zoning regulations, it's a quarter acre irregular shaped lot. I mean, it's not this rectangle box. So, you know, if we put it out to bid to the highest bidder, they could buy it, but not develop on it, because it's not large enough for development. Like I said, it's a small remnant tract. So we, once we were approached, the only way we can sell surplus properties, have it appraised. We have done that, and once before United, sell it for that exact appraised amount.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Mr. Davis? I was speaking with you after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
We're now at 15DD. Double D is resolution authorizing mayor to execute a purchase agreement between the City of Huntsville and Nit Neil Partners LLC for the purchase of property along Meridian Street.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Jefferson, do you know what they intend to use this property for?
There's an existing commercial use next to it. I think this is just an expansion of that use, Mr. Davis?
And what would, Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, come back. Would it be for parking, for additional building? Would it be green space?
Yes, I think initially it's for, there's an existing office building that's brand new there, and for the near immediate terms that they need for additional parking. But the remnant tract that we have, plus the vacant tract that's adjacent to it that they have, would allow for a future commercial building there. But right now, it's surface parking.
Is there any reason to do this tonight?
No, I mean, there's no urgency on behalf of the city.
Councilmembers, I don't feel good about this. I'd like to do some more discussion if that's...
I'll second your motion.
Okay. I move to postpone this item till the next regular council meeting.
Sure. Thank you, councilmembers.
Second by Dr. Showers. All those in favor, postponement, signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. We have no legal department item transactions. Do we have communication from the public? Mr. Hennessy, you're first up. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Walt Hennessy, 10,002 Hogan Drive, 35803. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. And first of all, I'd like to send kudos to John Oshewski. I got a complaint of some debris underneath on Aldridge Creek, and they said they've been trying to get it removed. There was a tree and everything else. And I said, well, I'll call Councilman Oshewski and see if we can get something done. A week later, it was done. So, John, you've got a, you're a hero down there on one street.
Did he, did he send Rex Reynolds' son to do it?
No. I think Mr. Hatfield took care of that. Also, the Spay Neuter Clinic, we're having a fundraiser at the D&amp;L Bistro on September the 18th from 5 to 8:30. I'd like to invite council and the mayor to attend. You'll be around some nice animal lovers and people that just really enjoy good dining. So, and also in November, a fundraiser for the, which is called the Plea Market, which benefits the Spay Neuter Clinic. So with that being said, it seems like I'm always the last one to bat cleanup, but I hope everybody has a safe and happy Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reed's going to follow you up tonight. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. President Mark Russell, thank you for holding the issue on the city property there. I think it's good that you hold and get concern and care. I got just a few words to say and the election will be over, okay? I promise when I get through with this statement time, one or two. I want to thank all the citizens that voted, the few that voted, out of 15,000, I think there's about 1,800. Many people don't care what you do with their money up there, so have at it. Go ahead. I mean, I won't get in your way about everything. Go ahead. People don't really care. They want to vote. I really got to go back and talk about the Jackie Reed plan, and I'll let this go. I'll let it die forever. The plan, the planning department made this, redistricting plan, it only changed, it says, the only change I made to City Huntsville that I moved to the census block in my neighborhood was back to District 4 after five meetings. On the sixth meeting, this was all changed. There were only 335 people in the census block that was moved. Their plan met the Department of Justice guidelines. All of the deviations were below 2%. I called the Justice Department on this whole thing. They told me to turn it into the Ethics Commission. Thank God, I did not. I'll never say another word about the redistricting. I'm sorry and sad that the public in Sherwood Park, and many places I went, did not know that their district lines had been changed. But now I blame the dumb people on that. I'm sorry.[1750.58]